...two thousand twelve. And at this time, we'd like for you to stand and we're gonna pray and have an allegiance to the flag. Father Lord, we thank you for blessing us to be able to come out today. Lord, another day that you've given us to conduct the business of this county. We thank you, Lord, for our nation. We thank you for our state. We thank you for the privilege to serve. And now, Lord, we ask you to bless this meeting, that things will be accomplished, to bring blessing to the citizens of this county in glory to your name, in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic on which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. This being the first meeting after the election, and we have to have installation of offices as well as election of chairman. And we're gonna turn the meeting over to our county manager, our interim county manager, and he will conduct the meeting until those oaths and offices are complete. Ken.
Okay. First item that we can do is chairman and do...
Oath of office.
I'm sorry. Do the oath of office. And are you gonna be doing those? Individually. And Ms. Linda, I believe would be first.
Yes.
Which one?
I, Linda Hoffler.
I, Linda Hoffler.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and maintain the Constitution and laws of the United States.
That I will support and maintain the Constitution and laws of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina, not inconsistent therewith.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina, not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of my office as Gates County Commissioner.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duty of my office as Gates County Commissioner.
So help me God.
So help me God. Okay. (applause).
I'd just like to take a couple of minutes to make a couple of comments. I would like to thank the citizens of Gates County for giving me the honor and the privilege of serving as their commissioner. I am looking forward to working with the old commissioners and the county manager on the challenges facing this county. I truly believe that each of the commissioners want the best for Gates County and its citizens. I recognize that we have different life experiences and diverse opinions. I see that as a positive for the county. I understood... I understand that we will not always agree on every issue. However, the key to our successful growth and prosperity is that everyone and their ideas be treated with respect. I believe that we will be able to build a consensus of opinion on the board and with the citizens of the county if this guiding principle is followed. Several people have commented that being the only female on the board might create some problems for me. I don't believe that that will be the case. I know each of your wives, and I'm sure that they have taught you that women are always right.[243.81][243.81](laughter). In all seriousness, I look forward to working with this group of commissioners and see positive growth for Gates County. I would like to take this opportunity to thank my family and friends who worked tirelessly on my campaign. They worked the polls on a sunny day in May and a cold winter windy day in November. They talked with their family and friends and neighbors on my behalf. They put out my campaign signs. They took them up, only to have to put them out again and take them up again. So I, you know, I had people of all ages, from ninety-four years old to two years old, working on my campaign. And to each of them, they will never know how much I appreciate their efforts. I also like to say a word about Sid Pierce. As his former history teacher, I am proud that he was willing to get involved in the political process. For our democracy to work, everyone, regardless of their age, needs to step forward and be involved. And I congratulate Sid on his campaign. Again, I thank you for placing your trust in me to serve as your commissioner. I look forward to working through the issues facing our county with you, the board, the county manager, and the citizens.[323.44][323.44](applause).
Okay. Now, Commissioner Jordan.
I, Henry Jordan.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and maintain the Constitution and laws of the United States.
That I will support and maintain the constitutional laws of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina, not inconsistent therewith.
And the constitutional laws of North Carolina, and not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of my office as Gates County Commissioner.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of my office, office as Gates County Commissioner.
So help me God.
So help me God. Thank you very much.[388.12][388.12](applause). I too would like to thank everyone for the privilege of serving once again another four years. I attribute my success to the citizens of this county. As you saw in my thank you notice, that I said, "We did it," not Henry himself. It took the support of the citizens of the county. And I just want you to know that I have the interests of the counties, the best interests of the county at heart, and I will do my utmost to try to continue to ensure that Gates County can be the best that we can be. And I thank you very much.[434.06][434.06](applause).
Okay. This time, it will be time to... For the election of chairman of the board. Are there any motions?
I'd like to nominate Henry Jordan for chairman.
We have nomination of Henry Jordan. Are there any other nominations?
Mr. Chair... Um, Mr. Interim County Manager, Mr. Winley. I'd like to make a motion that we close nominations for chairman.
We have a motion to close nominations. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed likewise? We have a new chairman, Commissioner Jordan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I thank you, county manager. And I thank you, board, for the confidence that you all placed in me to serve as chairman. I will do my utmost to try to carry out this position, that it will reflect the goodwill of this board and that all of us will be able to contribute in a way that's positive for the county. Now that we've had the election of the chairman, this county manager, I do feel that we need to carry that through a motion. We closed the nomination, but it should've gone through a motion to... That Henry Jordan, his motion is second, and that we vote on that. So if you would, we'd like to entertain a motion for that.
I make a motion that we... That Henry Jordan become chairman of Gates County Board of Commissioners for the year two thousand and twelve thirteen.
Second.
All right. It's been motion second, that Henry Jordan would become chairman of the Board of Commissioners for two thousand and twelve thirteen. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Thank you. Okay. All right. The next item on our agenda is to elect the vice chairman. And we're gonna open the floor for nominations of the vice chairman for the Board of Commissions.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'd like to nominate Jack Owens as our vice chair.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion that we close nominations for vice chair.
All right. Mr. Jack Owens has been nominated as vice chairman, and the nominations have been closed. All in favor of closing nomination, let me know, saying aye.
Aye.
All right. We'll entertain a motion to elect Mr. Jack Owens, Commissioner Jack Owens, as vice chairman of the Board of Commissioners.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that Mr. Jack Owens be nominated and approved as vice chair for the year two thousand and twelve thirteen.
Second. All right. It's been motion second, properly second. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. All right. Jack Owens.
(inaudible). Thank you, Ken.
Okay. Good afternoon.[645.23][645.23](laughter).
All right.
Congratulations again. All right. The next item on our...
(inaudible).
We will entertain on our agenda is to approve the agenda. There are no changes have been presented for this agenda. Are there any changes or recommendations we have? Okay. If there are no recommendations for changes, then we'll entertain a motion to accept the agenda as presented.
Mr. Chairman, that will include the... They weren't in that.
Okay. Yes. All right. Yes, we do.
Include this into it.
Yes, we do have an adjustment. You have in front of you the minutes from Friday, and we'd like to conclude those with the approval of the minutes that was in your package. That's November thirty. Okay. All right. With the inclusion of the November thirtieth minutes, there are no other changes, we'll entertain a motion to accept the agenda as updated.
Is there a move?
Second.
It's been motion second, approve the agenda. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Okay. All right. You have before you the minutes of November seventh. November nineteenth. And nope. I'm sorry. Twenty-sixth and twenty-seventh and thirty.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Page eleven seventy-seven.
Okay.
Is that date October tenth in the middle? Is that correct?
Okay.
It's right under the...
Right in draft?
Right.
That is...
Was the date that was on the disposition schedule.
Right. So it is correct?
That is correct.
Okay. On that same page, I do have one observation. The next to the last paragraph, it says that pending certification to receive a ten percent salary increase, that was in April two thousand and thirteen. It should've been noted there.
Okay.
In April two thousand and thirteen. Can there be any other corrections? All right. If there are no other corrections, we'll entertain a motion to accept our minutes of November seventh, November nineteenth, November twentieth, twenty-sixth, twenty-seventh, and thirty.
I make a motion that we accept those minutes.
Second.
All right. It's been motion second, that we accept the minutes as modified.
Yes.
Okay. For those dates, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Okay. All right. At this time, we will open the floor for citizen's comments, and let's see if we have any.
Yeah, run on.
Run on. Okay.
Chuck, Chuck had his hand up there.
I wrote that in inadvertently, and in the second section, I would like to come to the first section if that's permissible.
Sure.
Mr. Chairman, vice chairman, members of the board, Mr. Manager, members of the community, Truck Brothers four eighty-five Drumhill Road in Gates. First and foremost, I'd like to echo the same sentiments that Mr. Bazemore echoed at our night meeting back in November about now that we have a new board, we've got a new vision and a new focus and a new face, and let's all hope that the comments and the attitude that has been demonstrated here this morning can transfer and transend to all of the business for the good of the county. And we need to put attitudes and conflicts beside and do what twelve thousand one hundred and ninety-seven people want y'all to do. I'd like to go back in regards to comments that I had at the November night meeting and in regards to the video that was put on the county website, I believe at the November seventh, in regards to former manager Chapel identifying to the board that he had, I believe he used the term FYI, want to let you know that we've spent or gonna spend nine thousand dollars in regards to upgrading the retention pond at the Commerce Center. Since that night meeting, and I brought this up, I've had a number of phone calls in regards to that statement. And those statements, to me, have been very positive in the reflection of why, again, are we going to expense money to enable someone else's infrastructure to be more capable? And at that time, I asked at that meeting, I did not want an answer, but based on the last two weeks of phone calls and people asking, I think it's time that the citizens of the county are owed a response in regards to if that statement is true, if it is forecasted in the future of a future expense, so forth and so on. So I think it's time that the... That this board today be proactive and step up to the plate and answer the question, why are we... Or have we spent nine thousand dollars to upgrade the retention pond at the Commerce Center for somebody else's infrastructure? Along with that same comment, it was, I think it was nine thousand dollars that was gonna be expensed. This goes back within the last four years. The board at that time approved to up the county manager's ability to spend money without approval from, I believe, five thousand dollars to ten thousand dollars. Now, as someone working in the public sector, I know how to get around that ten thousand dollars by asking the person that I'm doing business with, that if we got a thirty thousand dollar expense, he can give me three separate POs and I can expense it over ninety or a hundred and twenty day time. With the new board on today, and the interim manager here and his experience and the probability of a new person coming on, I challenge the board to go back to the amount that was in place before for accountability purposes, and that that money can only be spent with your approval. If this would've been in past tense, that nine thousand dollars, if it has been spent, could not have been spent without your approval. So that's the two things I'm asking today. The county is asking for questions in regards to the retention pond, and I think the ability for the county manager to spend ten thousand dollars needs to be reviewed and backed up to its former position with the new manager coming on board. Thank you.[1192.01][1192.01](applause).
All right. Thank you for those comments. We will have an answer for you. We'll have an answer before the next meeting, but we will... I would ask clerk if we'll put that on the agenda. Ken, if you will, we'll put this on our priority to provide answers for that, and either county manager or the chairman will address that at the next meeting. All right. Next item on our agenda is our department reports. And before we move on, commissioners of the interview, I don't want to comment on any of this before we move forward. And if not, we'll go to our department reports. Our first report is from our county administrator, Ms. Renee McGinnis.
Good morning.
I'd like to welcome Ms. Hoffler to our board, and it is nice to see a woman's face back on the board again. I'd like to welcome Mr. Jordan back. I'd also like to welcome interim county manager, Mr. Winley, and I look forward to working with each and every one of you. The first thing on... That I have for you today is the tax collector's report, and I know because of the timeframe, you really haven't had time to review it in any way. So once you have had time to look over it, if you have any questions, if you'll let me know. And Ms. Hoffler, if you want to come to my office one day or give me a call or whatnot, we'll go through this a little more detailed.
Okay.
So that you can have some... A little better understanding of it. There really isn't anything out of the norm to report. We have started collecting fees from... For Zikeas Legal Services, which you will see listed in the other items that are listed separately down at the bottom. And those fees basically just funnel through our office, go through straight to Zikeas Legal Services. Are there any questions in reference to this? And I think later Johnny's gonna probably touch on this a little bit. Is that correct, Johnny?
Yeah, but I do wanna make a comment about this, Renee, and that... And this can be kind of a... And I don't know if someone thought this or not, but when it does say current years over here, these are calendar years and not physical years.
Well, they're actually fiscal years.
The numbers themselves, the valuation for that current tax...
Well, the evaluations... The valuation itself is based on a January one figure.
Right.
And that is per state statute. That is correctly. That's correct.
And they are received in that and budgeted in that, but they truly are based on the tax... On a calendar year which rolls into the fiscal year. So you're really in a real six months to a certain extent. You understand what I mean?
I see what you're saying, but...
Okay. All right.
We work on a fiscal year from that July one to June thirtieth, but like you say, our values are based on the January one date.
Taxes are not due, though, until the new fiscal year.
That's correct.
That's correct.
Any other questions in regard to this? Like I say, once you've had a chance to look over it, if you have any, just give me a call or drop me an email. I also wanted to let you know, we did this past week have actually two foreclosure sales scheduled. One was taken care of prior to the sale date. The other was basically one that we had had previously, that this sale was just to clear up some legal issues that were not handled through Mr. Ellis's office before. So no changes with that. Zikeas Legal Services, we have been seeing some results due to those foreclosures, and we will, this coming week, be sending them an additional eighteen properties for foreclosure. These are ones that basically, when we had sent out the initial letters, had set up payment plans, but have fallen through on those payment plans, have not kept those up. We're sending on to him.
And the... So that would bring roughly a total to...
Yeah, it's gonna be getting close to fifty right now that he will have.
And how many does Travis Ellis have tending?
Travis Ellis still has around, I think it's around twenty-five, thirty maybe, probably more around twenty-five. And we do have a list that we want to get to y'all, because there are quite a number on that list that as of right now, the fees associated with it are only a hundred and forty-five dollars, and we don't know if it's something that y'all might be interested in bringing back in haves or not. So we'll get that list to you. Also, with what was given to y'all this morning is a copy of what will be our two thousand and thirteen listing form, which is actually gonna be on a eight and a half, eleven sheet of paper, similar to what your two thousand and thirteen tax bill was. So you will not be receiving that nice, ugly listing form like you have been receiving with the carving. So this is what the new listing form will be, which is pretty much the same thing as far as the same information. As far as those with farm equipment and whatnot, they receive a separate listing from us, giving them what they had listed the prior year, which helps them in listing for the upcoming year. And same with businesses, business personal property, we send them letters reminding them to list. We actually do not send out a listing form. We refer them to the website where they can actually go and fill out the form online and then print it out. So if you have any questions in reference to that, once you have a chance to look at it, just let me know. And I also wanted to update you a little bit on the new tag and tax system that is moving forward. We have had the opportunity to view what the new software will look like, and we are very excited about that. I think it'll give us more capabilities with motor vehicles than what we have right now. And as it stands right now, the state will start training with the state tax offices in February and March. And in April, we will start working with this in an effort for DMV to get out the notices for the July renewals, which is it'll be with the start of those July renewals, when the public will actually... Their invitation to renew will include their taxes, as well as the renewal fee for their license, and everything will be paid through DMV.
Did you... Were you told whether if you had a September renewal, is that gonna stay the same?
To my knowledge, there is no... I have not seen anything changing as far as people's renewal dates. The only thing that I have read that there will be a change in is the permanent plates. I think they're going to a... I think it's an orange plate.
It is orange.[1662.51][1662.51](laughter).
From the look on your face, apparently not a pretty plate, but anyway. So do y'all have any questions about anything?
Who is the vendor for the software?
It is Farragut and Farragut.
Farragut.
F-A-R-R-A-G-E-T, I believe. And that is actually the company that some of the state offices or some of the county offices already have their software in place, their whole package of software. This was done through the Association of County Commissioners several years ago. And so they basically have built off of that program that was already in place. And it's a web-based program, and we were real pleased with it when we first saw it. The operations of things really will not change that much for us. It's mainly gonna be a software change, and not collecting the funds will be the biggest change for us. So, can't there be no other questions? We do have some refunds that Ms. Harold is gonna present to you, and I believe the majority, if not all, of these refunds are simply due to overpayments. And keep in mind, we're in the mortgage company season again, so that happens quite frequently. So she'll present those to you.
Let me ask you one more question. Does this software interface with logistics, logics or logics, rather, far as the receipt?
That would be a question for Sandy, because I don't know what has been done on the financial side from the logic standpoint. Thank you.
Let me just ask you, the new listing form, is that the same supplier we had before?
Yes, yes. And they are scheduled to be... These will be outsourced. They are scheduled to go out December twenty-first. We like to try and get them out before the Christmas holidays, so when people come in to pay their taxes between Christmas and the first of the year, they can take care of the listing form, too.
Is it the same cost?
It'll be the same cost, but it is a little bit more, because the form and all is a little different. So, any other questions?
All right. All right, we thank you.
Okay, I'm gonna turn it over to Ms. Harold.
Good morning.
Good morning.
And welcome to everyone. And I would like to just explain about our refunds, so that you will, will know why I'm coming up here sometimes at the meetings, to ask for money to go back to some of our taxpayers. At times, people overpay, and they do not have other taxes that are due at that time. So, in that case, we do have to do a refund of those payments. And as Ms. McGinnis stated, this time of the year, we're getting in a lot of payments on, from escrow accounts, through mortgage companies. And we'll review those on the sheet that you see in your package. There are, you know, a number of reasons why we would need to send funds back to them. The first request for refund in your package is in the amount of $100. And that was actually due to an overpayment by a taxpayer. This was not involved, involving a mortgage company. And there were no other taxes due. We always check our system to make sure there are no taxes due, before we do send a refund to a taxpayer.
Is that taxpayer, the one we're looking at there? Is that an elderly person, do you know?
I'm not sure, but I know that the, what we have to put down as taxpayer name, is the person who made that payment. And it was for this lady, who's the tax, the name the tax was in. So I feel that may be the case, but I'm not sure.
Check will be made to the top name, or the...
It will be made to the top name, and I will ask Marita to say for this lady, who actually is the owner of that tax account. Any other questions on that one?
Mr. Owens, I can explain that a little bit, if you'd like. Mrs. Asherton is sick, and she's made Mrs. Lee her power of attorney. And that's the reason she's paying the fee for her.
Okay, good, thank you.
Okay, if there are no other questions on that one, the next one is in the amount of $4,868.46. This is actually attorney fees and cost only. This reflects monies that were paid on, in the foreclosure situation we had last week. The taxpayer came in and brought the taxes current, and also paid to our office all fees and cost on that transaction. And we just need to refund that over to Mr. Ellis's office.
So, Gwen, how much were the, were the back taxes on this property?
Actually, at that, at this point, he only owed 2011, and they were about $130. And he had, he had been more delinquent than that, and had, had paid on the taxes, on that balance. But he only had a balance on the 2011. But he had accumulated, as you can see, a lot of legal cost and fees. So that, that's why the foreclosure proceeding continued.
Yes, Renee?
Well, in this situation, we have some taxpayers that prefer to bring their funds into us, versus taking these to Ellis's office immediately. And the reason this is done this way is we actually like to run it through our system, so that we can see where those funds came into our office and went out, instead of just hanging.
Create a paper trail.
All I wanted to see was the percent differential between what it would and what it was.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, and the last sheet that you have in your package would be the mortgage refunds for November. As you will see, the first three items are being refunded to the taxpayer. And the reason for that was, the, they were paid out of escrow from these mortgage companies, and the last payer was the taxpayer. They also paid their own taxes. So we'll be refunding those three back to the taxpayer themselves, because the mortgage company had already paid. The, the remainder of these are going back to, as you will see, the individual mortgage companies. And there are different situations, mainly because maybe an attorney paid the taxes, and then the mortgage company also paid out of the escrow account. Maybe there was a little bit of mix-up there, or miscommunication as to whether the taxes were paid at a closing, or that kind of thing. There are some situations here, you'll see, where two different mortgage companies or servicers paid the taxes. And the last payment that came in would be refunded to, to that payer. Are there any questions about any of those you see on that list? And even if a taxpayer may owe other taxes, if we receive funds from a mortgage company, we do have to send that refund back to them, if they overpaid on the account. However, as in the case of the first three, there were no other taxes due, so we would just send that refund back to that taxpayer. Any questions?
All right. We thank you. And at this time, we will need a motion to approve the tax refunds, overpayment refunds, to the designated parties.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we make refunds for said claims per Ms. Harold's presentation.
Second?
All right, motion second, any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
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 All opposed? Nay. All right, we thank you so much.
Thank you.
Gwen, I'll make one comment. And I was looking on the expense and revenue, it looks like we budgeted $40,000 for this. And with this, what we have in here looks, we were at 38, so it looks like we still got about $23,000 in our budget against this for tax refunds, going forward for the next six to seven months. Is that...
$23,000?
Well, no, it was 38, and we just approved 15, 15 of this, make it 23, so. And I don't know how that compares to last year, but it looks like, you know...
It is probably about the same, because we always do this.
Right. Right.
Thank you.
Good job.
All right, the next item on our agenda will be our water department supervisor, Timmy Hedge Pass Surplus Equipment. And our county manager, interim county manager, will stand in for Timmy.
Just to have two items there, the board has already approved the purchase of two replacement trucks. And these trucks would be surplused and put for sale under GOV deals. And it needs your approval to sign off on surplusing and putting these on GOV deals.
That's 2002 and 2008.
Correct.
All right, we have it for you, the surplus equipment request. For the most GOV deal, what's the pleasure to award?
One question, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Have we already replaced these, Ken?
They've been ordered.
So those are the ones that, the one last month, I believe we did want, okay?
Chairman, I'll make the motion that we approve the disposition of these two assets.
All right.
Second?
All right, so the motion's second, that we'll approve the disposition of the two vehicles. If there are any other discussions, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Nay. The next item, our agenda would be our new business. And this time, we're gonna ask our county manager to discuss the first item, which is authorization to sign extension, time extension, for our DCA grant 11C 2312.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The, some months ago, the county contracted with a private contractor to be the administrator for Division of Community Assistance Housing Grant. And as it turned out, the administrator did not get the paperwork in, rally on time, was a few days late. And in fact, he did not get it in on time to six counties that he was working for. And honestly, I think he got overloaded, or they got overloaded, and did not get most of their contracts in on time to the Division of Community Assistance. HUD did not like the fact that, since this is their money, passing through to the Division of Community Assistance, that this paperwork was not done on a timely basis. So they have sent a letter here, in which they asked the county, since the county is the grantee, that an appropriate time extension is being issued here, and that the county agrees to strictly abide by the dates of the original contract as amended, and that the county designated staff member to closely monitor the activities of the contract. This is, let me stress here, this is not the county's fault. The county got the paperwork on time to the consultant, as best that I can determine, and everything was done all right on the county's part. The Division of Community Assistance agreed with me, and that it was the consultant's fault. He did not get the paperwork in on time to the state. We've been granted an extension, and so this does not happen again. I think it would be in the county's best interest to have the manager more involved in this, on a monthly basis, and that the manager be called in to be the contact person, and that the manager can delegate some of this information, and some of this work out, to the planning director, possibly. But the manager needs to be the one directly responsible to make sure everything is done on a monthly basis, on a timely basis.
Ken, and who was the vendor in this case?
The Wooton Company.
Wooton, that's, I thought that, okay.
This is, to me, it's somewhat of a significant issue, because we have a $400,000 grant that we're gonna replace from three to four homes, and we've already started the process. And as county manager said, that the administrator fell short. But now that they've fallen short, and the responsibility's been placed back on the county. And first of all, we have to request an extension. What is the extension date gonna be? That we want this new extension.
It's current, just as soon as the board can act, that's when it starts.
Okay. All right, and the second thing, you know, we have to strictly abide by the original contract as amended, and that we designate a county staff member. And I agree with county manager, that we should designate the county manager as that contact person, but also, our planning director must be aware that that information is crucial. Because if we don't get this information in, we could end up having to pay back that grant. We shouldn't have to be put ourselves in that position. So it's something very, very important. And also, instead of the administrator submitting a report monthly, now the county has to certify and submit that report. So that's an added responsibility on the county. And the county manager certainly needs to be the one that is ultimately responsible for that, in conjunction with, with the planning director, for getting that information together. So, I mean, I agree with, with Ken, that, you know, we take this approach and authorize the correspondence with DCA, as we've discussed here.
I see, in the memo here, that we gotta do this tomorrow.
They have to be notified by tomorrow, we'll get something to them. And I will call initially, and follow it up with a letter from the chairman.
Chairman, you're gonna need a motion?
Yes, we will need a motion. And I will, the motion will be that the board accepts the conditions that's been presented, and the chair will sign on behalf of the board, that we agree to these conditions.
So move. Second? Thank you for making the motion for us.
All right, so the motion's second, that we accept the conditions presented by DCA, and that we will abide by them. And if there's no further discussion, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Nay. County manager, you will...
I'll put that together.
Get the letter, and have me sign it, okay?
Yes, sir.
All right, our next item.
I can handle that, too, if you want.
Yes, please.
Next item is recommendations of the personnel board, there were three that came out of the last meeting. The first one was brought to the board's attention by Crystal Boone, buildings and grounds supervisor. She presented a request to replace one recently retired position, a full-time position with one full-time and one part-time employee. And this is possible because the new employee would be making less funds than the former employee, who was a 30-year employee. So the personnel committee voted to approve the one full-time position, which was already in the budget, and add in a part-time position with the remainder of the funds, since buildings and grounds is extremely shorthanded. You don't wanna do these one at a time.
I think we probably wanna do them one at a time.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right.
Can I ask, I've asked a few questions about that, which, and I know this would be very difficult to do, of course, but what happens in this, this particular situation, looking at Plan A and Plan B, which I concur, and I'm fully supportive of that. But obviously, if you go down and you look at a full-time position, and you look at the requirements that are, of healthcare and things like that, and you see this, the salary, and then you look at your amount of healthcare, obviously, you can almost replace that with a part-time person, if you go to that matrix. Now, I think that would be difficult, finding part-time people that would be willing to do this, that fit that criteria, where, you know, most of the time, you're gonna be getting probably retired people, or someone that has that, that's retired from the state, DOT, or something like that, where they have that already in their, their contract. But that's the only thing, there is a lot of legitimacy to having part-time people, if you can find them, where you don't have to do that. And basically, you can almost get a full-time, or a part-time position, without having to do that, if we can, could actually do that. Which, so, I don't, I don't know if that entered into play or not, but that is my observation, that in this particular case. And then the other thing that happens with that, and which those are costs that are going up substantially, or putting a hurt on a lot of small businesses and things like that. But obviously, in the, an environment where you have 35-hour work week versus a 40-hour work week, well, those costs are actually 14% higher than what, in the private sector. So it's a lot to be thinking about there, although I'm in support of either one of these plans.
I think that, that came into play, it did come into play during discussions, and it was also brought up, that, you know, we, we had a full-time employee, and that the duties and responsibilities of that employee, you know, have not diminished. Increased, probably somewhat, with addition of new buildings and new responsibilities. So, you know, to have three part-time versus one full-time and one part-time was, was probably not the most effective way to go. We kinda agree with that. All right. Any other discussion on this item? We can do a motion and accept them one at a time, or, I think that's probably the better way to do. Is there a motion to accept the recommendation of Personnel Board for one full-time employee and one part-time for the maintenance department, in replacement of the retired employee?
Second.
All right. It's been motion second that the recommendation of Personnel Board be accepted for the replacement employee. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay.
The, excuse me, the next item is a request by Billy Nguyen, Emergency Management Director. He is currently at a pay grade 69, 67AA, and is requesting an increase in that. The Personnel Committee recommended him go into a 69S. And the reason for this is that he was eligible for a merit increase, and he could not get his own merit increase because he had maxed out in the pay grade he was in, which wasn't really fair to Mr. Nguyen. So the board recommended him go into a 69S. And, and I think, as you can see from this and, and the sheriff's request, and then maybe some previous requests in previous months, it's a good idea that a lot of the employees are maxing out in the pay grade they're in. It may be a good time, at budget time, to look at reevaluating the pay scale to see where employees ought to be. If they're already maxing out where they are, it might be good to look at. But in this particular one case, Mr. Nguyen would go, if the board approves, from a 67AA to a 69S.
Let me share a little additional light on that. You know, as has been pointed out, the way that our employees obtain raises per year, they get a cost of living raise, and then if they score on their performance evaluation highly satisfactory or outstanding, then they are eligible for up to a 2% merit increase. And with Billy, I'm not sure if this was the first year or second year that he's missed it, but when we look, preliminarily looked at the salaries of EMS directors in neighboring counties and so forth, that his is, doesn't come up quite to what those are. And to penalize him with not receiving a merit raise, plus his pay not being, you know, substantially equivalent to those counties that are somewhat like us, it was somewhat of a, of an injustice. So instead of trying to reclassify him to where we think he ought to be, we just allowed him to be moved to a grade level that would allow him to get a merit raise, not necessarily give him an additional increase. And we talked about possibly in the future to do a salary study of our employees in the county, to see where they measure up. You know, some may be just where they need to be, some may be, we may find some may be above. I don't know, we don't know. But, and, and certainly when we find out where they should be, and if an employee maxes out, well then, you know, that's just it. So be it. That's where they, you know, if they wanna move in, they're gonna have to move vertically, instead of trying to move, you know, go to the next grade. So that's somewhat of a history behind that, and justification for why we, we recommended that we allow Mr. Nguyen to receive merit raise through a next grade adjustment.
I agree with that explanation, and if I'm ready to make a motion that we approve the recommendation of the Personnel Board on that matter.
Second.
All right. It's been motion second that we approve the recommend, Board, Personnel Board recommendation on the salary adjustment for Billy Nguyen, grade adjustment, rather. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Okay.
Okay, the last item is the sheriff requested a deputy, he stated that Deputy Brown had resigned, and he'd like to allocate Deputy Brown's salary to School Resource Officer Jordan, and make Mr. Jordan what he referred to as his senior patrol officer, and then allocate Officer Jordan where he is to newly hired Deputy Allen. Deputy Allen has his certification. The committee felt like this would be okay if the sheriff would proceed with providing the necessary information to the manager's office, so this could be accomplished. But as of the meeting time today, we had not received any information from the sheriff yet to proceed with that. Yeah, the sheriff was out of town last week at a conference, so we, he was not able to provide that information to us.
I see where Deputy Allen already has certification.
Yes.
Do you, certification, and he's been with us how long, or was his certification with another department? So he was with another county?
Yeah, he's been through BLET.
So Deputy Allen replaced Deputy Brown, is really in essence what's happened, right?
In budgeting-wise, but position-wise?
Right, yeah.
Position-wise, he has not.
Right.
Basically, a shift of previous position.
And duties.
Right. And sheriff's supposed to come up with some kind of justification, in other words, the duties that, that Brown had, that those duties would be assumed by Jordan, and, and also the responsibilities that Jordan has, Allen is certified to, to do that as well. So there'd be some justification for, for making, what you're dealing with is an, is an in-grade step adjustment. And, you know, our only provision right now is merit pay or quota to get your in-step adjustments. And with this, the supervisor or director will be making a conscious recognition of the need for that step increase, to cover the additional duties that the employee will be doing.
I know that we do employee department head evaluations. Does the sheriff submit employee evaluations to the Personnel Board? Just County Manager. Okay. And are they done throughout the year, or is there, is there a specific month? Anniversary of their hiring date?
So at, so at this time, actually, there's no action for the board until the sheriff submits us some documentation. But we just wanted to bring it to the board. I mean, of course, if the board wanna override Personnel Board and, and go ahead and approve the sheriff, what he's asked, I mean, that, the board has that pleasure.
Personnel Board will meet again, Nguyen, by request?
Yeah, probably the next 30 days.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we table this until the sheriff provides such documentation.
All right.
Second.
It's been motion second that we table this issue until sheriff provides appropriate documentation. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. All right. Okay, right. Next item would be the surplus highback units from the corporate extension.
These are being replaced, and we need to put these out for sale as soon as possible, see what we can get out of them. Probably will not get a great deal out of these, but it is, these are old, old units. A five-ton unit that is many, many years old, and a gas furnace with an A coal that is many, many years old. And they are being replaced, so we'd like to surplus these and see if we can put them out for sale. Somebody may want to use them for parts.
All right.
The acquired date, 8/14/2012, is that correct? When was the asset purchased or acquired?
No, no, these are old, old, yeah.
That's not correct.
That's probably when it was taken out of service.
I think that was when, yeah, when it was taken out of service.
Okay, so it says acquired, purchased or acquired.
I can recommend locking it up until you sell it.
Yes.
Somebody will wanna steal that. Okay, good.
And when it says gas over here, and I don't know, and this is something I've been thinking about, and of course, with close proximity, is this, this propane?
Uh, I think that's correct. Yes.
It is. Because, and I don't know how many others we have, but it, this comes back to the same thing with the school situation, with the natural gas, in which I didn't really realize. I think the, right over here, the line is right over here.
Yes, the new system's been replaced with natural gas.
It has?
Yes.
Very good.
All right. We have before you two surplus highback units. What is the pleasure of board?
Mr. Chairman, how are you, how are you planning on advertising this?
It would be through Gov. deals.
I don't think we specified that on there.
Mr. Chairman, in my past experience, when you're talking about used stuff like that, you, you don't get a whole lot of, people wanting to use parts. My recommendation would be, put it on a trailer and carry it to the, to the junk man out there and see what you can get, the same way we did with some of the water department. To big bucks, or whoever, whoever in the area is paying the most that particular day.
We can do that.
I feel like, I agree with Ken, whoever purchases this, they're gonna pick it up and go straight down there to the same location.
More than likely.
I'll make a motion that we just go ahead and carry it to some scrap dealer, and get what we can get for it per pound, and be done with it. And that is a motion.
All right, we have a motion on the floor.
I second that motion.
Discuss.
All right. Any further discussion?
I would like to ask Mr. Jernigan to amend his motion that we take it to the one here in the county, so we can support.
That would be fine.
Big bucks.
All right. Second still standing? All right, it's been motion, probably motion amended, that the surplus highback equipment will be declared surplus, and we'll dispose of it by getting the best price from our local scrap dealer. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Okay. That concludes all the items for the county manager. Now, we have some items from the chairman. First item we have is that we have some vacancies on some of our boards, and one of our vacancies would be the planning board, which Commissioner Hoffler vacated. And we have in front of you one applicant. We only have one applicant for this position, Mr. John H. Carter, and on, from 75 Gray Road in Sunbury. You've seen his application, and you have his qualifications, and we would entertain a motion to act on his application for to fill that seat on our planning board.
I don't believe Mr. Carter's in the audience today, but I know Mr. Carter, and we'd like to recommend him for that position.
You wanna make that a motion?
Yes.
Could we have a little bit of discussion first? And I wanna make sure this is clear. I've been looking around a little bit at the school of government on this particular issue here, and, and I have no problem with that, but I, you know, the way I read it, I don't see that this becomes a necessity. But, again, it depends on Ms. Hoffler, and at least the way I read into it, so.
I, I also went to Institute of Government to see if I had to resign, and technically, no, I do not. I can, I hold a elected position and an appointed position, but I think in the essence of trying to, I think it would just be better if I stepped down from the planning board to be on the Board of Commissioners at this time, even though I only have six more months in my term. I just thought it would be more prudent on my part to do that.
Mr. Chairman.
And I was sending my letter this morning.
Mr. Chairman, based on Ms. Hoffler's response, I would second Mr. Owens' recommendation.
All right. All right, we have a motion second that Mr. John H. Carter replace Commissioner Hoffler on the planning board. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay.
Ms. Hoffler, I was assuming that when I made my motion, we should know that.
We'll get a letter to him. Okay. All right, the next item on our agenda is appointment to the Personnel Board. The Personnel Board, according to our Personnel Ordinance, consists of the chairman, the county manager, and one commissioner on the Board of Commissioners. So with me becoming chairman, Chairman Twine is no longer on the board, now there's a position that's vacated, and we would need to replace the position that I held previously. The chairman is automatic, you don't have to vote on him. The chairman is automatic part of the, so we just need to nominate and vote on one commissioner.
Mr. Chairman.
And the volunteers.
I'd like to nominate Ms. Hoffler.
All right. One nomination, are there any other nominations? Close the nomination.
I move that the nominations be closed.
Second.
Our nomination's closed, and said one name. Is there a motion to accept or appoint Commissioner Hoffler as the Personnel Board member?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we appoint Ms. Linda Hoffler as our Commissioner Appointee to the Personnel Board.
Second.
All right. It's been motion second that Commissioner Hoffler will be appointed to Personnel Board. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Okay, the next item is we have a vacancy on the medical board, and I'm not sure if the chairman held, did the chairman hold that position? And I'm not sure if that's required to be held by the chairman. Is it required? We don't know. All right. I would recommend, of course, it's at the pleasure of the board, that we wait before we fill this. I don't mind serving on it, but certainly, if it does not have to be the chairman, then we wanna give everyone consideration for serving on that board. And I, and I believe that if we wait till January, that will not be too late till our next meeting.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion that Mr. Henry Jordan be appointed to this today.
Second.
It's been motion second.
Any discussion?
Any discussion.
Will you accept?
Yes, I, I'll accept it, but again, you know, I just didn't wanna just arbitrarily say the chairman would fill that, because I'm not sure that is a required position to be held.
I understand.
But we know that none of us are jumping overboard just to take on additions, but anyway, certainly, I appreciate it. All right, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Okay, Henry Jordan. Okay, Henry Jordan. Uh, our next board is our PCG board, uh, PCG board, which is our Prequem, Chawan and Gates Board for our convenience sites and for our disposal of, of, uh, refuge in the county. I believe, John, you were serving on that.
Yes, well, that, in that particular board, uh, we can have two commissioners and the county manager, which I'm there and Graham was on there, so we, you know, depending on what y'all want to do, which doesn't make any difference. That we will have, and, and this is extremely important because with these three counties here, it, it's just because of our population and our waste things, we kind of get at a, when, uh, they're trying to, uh, distribute cost out there, obviously, most of the time, we're the low guy. So, what they want to do is do a, hey, equal distribution, we kind of get burnt on that. So, it's important that we have our, because it's, it's about who's there, that we have three votes. Because I, I mean, sometimes you might get the swing, but you, you are really outmanned on some of these things where, you know, and I, and I don't blame them, if I was in their position, I would vote the same way, but, uh, you feel a real disadvantage at times.
Look for a clarification, if we have three members on that board, when a vote is made at one of the meetings, then we have three votes to cast.
No, you have to be present for the vote.
Um, but, I'm saying if.
No, you get three votes.
You get three votes if they're three present.
That's the way it's been done, now whether that's correct or not, Jack, I don't know.
Does it, do any?
And that might be a point to argue for in the future that, hey, each county gets one vote.
For example, how many members does Prequem have on the board?
They got, they got three too.
Okay.
Each county's got three opportunities, two commissioners and a county manager, and all three of them can actually vote. And this has happened several times that I've been there and this, I mean, obviously you both know, but you're wasting your time, cause there's no way you can win.
It sounds like to me from what I'm hearing from Commissioner Horr that we need to maintain three, three parties.
Very active parties.
Yes.
How often do they meet, uh?
Uh, maybe twice, two to three times a year at the very most, uh, during budget time, and of course, you're getting updates all the time that, uh, has some financial data and stuff like that on it, but as far as actively meeting, very, very little.
Are there any nominations or volunteers?
I will continue to volunteer if, if no one has an objection, uh, but we do need to appoint someone for Graham. If, or two, we, we need to appoint two people today.
Mr. Chairman, I, I'll volunteer for that if they accept me.
All right, uh,
Mr. Chairman, I'll, I'll volunteer as well.
Well, that's three.
One, two, and?
You got county manager.
County manager, okay, that's good.
But if we got three, we're gonna have a meeting.
Let's don't do that.
No, that's not a good idea.
Yeah, okay, um.
But if you want to serve, Mr. Owens, I don't have any problem.
I just want to make sure we had three of them. I didn't realize county manager was third party.
All right, we, we have, uh, Mr. Ken Jernigan and Mr. John, Commissioner Jernigan and Horr will serve as commissioners on the PCT board and our county manager. We'll entertain a motion to appoint those individuals.
I make the motion.
All right.
Second.
All right, it's been motion second, that, uh, those individuals be appointed to serve on the PCT board, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, nay? All right, our last one is the Northeast Workforce Development Consortium to replace Chairman Twine. Now, this is another one, uh, where I'm not sure it's the chairman. And, uh, they meet about three or four times a year, it's not monthly.
That one's not the chairman.
It's not the chairman, and I believe Graham volunteered for that one because he was not serving on so many boards and, you know, the kind of equally distributed number of us that are already on the board, we have several boards we're serving on, I'm currently serving on, we have a more, commission board who works closely with the workforce development and, uh, you know, if someone, I guess I'm gonna just go ahead and said, Commissioner Hoffler, if, if, if you would, would, uh, would care to serve on this board, I mean, you don't have to, but it certainly would distribute some of the.
I will try to pull my weight.
All right, okay, if there are no objections.
Second.
All right, we'll, we'll have, um, we'll have a motion, we'll have a motion to, uh, accept Commissioner Hoffler as the, uh, new member for the Workforce Development Consortium to replace Chairman Twine.
Second.
Second.
All right, it's been motion second, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Okay, we thank you, Commissioner Hoffler, okay. Do we need a break before we go into the next item, Mr. Horr?
Please, please.
All right, at this time, we will take a brief recess, uh, and we'll return. The next item we have is Commissioner Horr, but just before we go to that, we do want to make one clarification on the appointment to the planning board. Commissioner Hoffler's term on the planning board will expire in six month and, uh, we feel that we should appoint the replacement to serve out her six month term and then we will appoint him, that person again after the six month to serve a full term. If we don't, we'll get the planning board rotation schedule off, so, uh, where we made the motion to, uh, accept or appoint Mr. Carter, we'll ask that, uh, we amend that motion to, uh, appoint him for the six month term that Commissioner Hoffler has, uh, remaining. To fill her term, complete her term, rather.
Mr. Chairman, let me, let me ask the question of it. Now, does that mean, and I, uh, is it in the bylaws that they can only serve two terms, two consecutive terms?
It's in the bylaws, they.
Would this become an issue then of having six months and then another three?
Well, they will have an, they will serve an additional six months.
Right.
But the way it's set up, we stagger the terms so that you will have a certain number coming off at a certain time, in other words, you won't have one in June, another one in July or so forth and so on, you have two, when you replace, you replace them at one time.
I get, I, I guess what I'm asking though is can you have a consecutive seventy-eight months?
I think that the way it's written, that if you do not serve more than half of it, that all term, that, that would not, the six months would not come against you.
Right, okay, very good.
Who made that motion?
Mr. Horr.
I amend that motion to.
Mr. Owens, then, uh, Commissioner Horr said.
Okay.
Amended. And we will make sure that we notify him of that. Six months.
Second.
Second.
All right, all right, it's been, uh, the motion to appoint Mr. Carter to the planning board has been amended to, uh, serve out the six month remaining, uh, term of Commissioner Hoffler. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, nay? Thank you. All right, our next item on the agenda will be Commissioner Horr, presentation on the Budget, Property Tax and Long Term Debt.
It's getting better.
All right, good morning.
All right.
What we got here is this just actually, there's a bunch of slides and bear with me, it is kind of a little bit on the long side. This is, uh, available fund balance, uh, right off the North Carolina State Treasurer site and obviously this goes to two thousand and eleven, the only thing that's showing here is the number that's going up and shows us exceeding that, we are a little bit below the state population growth, but statewide, we're in, in good shape there. On this right here, this is from an audit report that we just had in December and this is the trend line shows two thousand and ten on available fund on the this is total general fund now, this is the general fund as well as all the funds that roll up into the total gross and you see we had a hundred and seventy-four thousand dollar increase this past year. And this is off, like I said, was off the audit return. Now, this slide, what you're seeing on the top line is the number you just saw, minus how much the state and I'm not a hundred percent, a hundred percent sure how they're actually calculating that, cause it does come in a little bit of conflict with some of the numbers I had. But in other words, they showed at the end of two thousand and twelve, we had two million nine hundred and thirty-eight thousand, nine hundred and seventy-nine of available fund balance. This is a two hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollar increase over two thousand and eleven. Now, this is also off of theirs by combining their audit reports for the last, uh, few years and you see in the trend line back down to the two nine three eight on the far bottom right, which shows six hundred and eight thousand dollars from two thousand and nine to two twelve. All right, so that's about two hundred and two thousand dollars per year. Top three revenues, and this is important, and the reason it's important is this number right here. And this is up a little bit from where it had been, we are generating fifty-six percent of our revenue comes from property taxes. My sales taxes improved to seventeen percent, so, and really that's where most of our revenues come from, from those two issues. Property tax receipts, well, two thousand and twelve, six million thirty-eight, thirty-seven thousand, last year, oh, two thousand and eleven, six million twenty-nine thousand, so very close and you see in the amount of money that's being generated out of property taxes alone, which is roughly fifty-six percent of our, uh, expended tours. And the state of North Carolina requires us to have a balanced budget, so on the balance beam, when everything is right, comes out exactly right, you're gonna have zero, zero. This never happens, we budget that way, but very seldom we ever, ever see that happen. So here's what you see in the general fund, in two thousand and eleven, ten five seventy-nine versus ten one ninety-three of expended tours. Same type scenario in two thousand and twelve, so in every case, that balance beam is like this. Revenues exceeded expended tours, when that happens, you have positive fund balance. Now, how all this all started was basically around this concept that I started at the first of the year, was concerned about and this number is off by two hundred dollars, cause this two hundred and sixteen dollars, I think it is, something like that, where I was calculating these loans that we had to DSS loan. Ten years, this is your savings here. Fifteen was here, other critical thing is the ten and fifteen, two point one nine percent versus two point eight nine percent. The difference in the savings was two hundred and nine thousand dollars, okay? This slide right here show you a little impact and this is what was happening in two thousand and eight and nine, was our property taxes. And this number was ninety-seven point five, what that should be, it would come out the same way, but what you're doing here is showing what tax neutral is. And basically what it is, this was the val, let's say your valuation was five hundred and eighty million dollars, you were generating five million, six hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars. Well, what you do, your valuation all of a sudden has gone to this, you still gotta generate these amount of dollars, so you back into what this number is. And then this is actually what was done. So we went from same valuation here to here, went from this to this, two hundred and ninety-six thousand dollar increase. Five point two six percent basically is what the tax increase, and this was a bad thing and a good thing. I'm thankful that it was done. Next thing that happens is understanding this. There are basically three methods in the accounting structure that accounting records are done by us. You as an individual are a cash basis taxpayer in most cases. You don't record revenue until you physically have it in your hand. Your expenditure is the same way, you might have an expenditure, but if you haven't actually paid the cash, you don't count it in your tax returns. If you do that, IRS is gonna come see you, so. Modified accrual basis is basically, which what we are, is basically the same thing as a cash basis taxpayer. You do not record the revenues until you physically actually receive the money. You gotta have it in your hand, you gotta have the cash, so you actually, whenever you're crediting revenue, you, that same day, you're walking over to the bank and making a deposit in the modified accrual basis. And accrual basis is what corporations, and the reason this is, this is the case, the government, the government here is not taxed, we don't pay taxes, but a corporation does. So the IRS and the government wants you to record that revenue as soon as you make the sale, you might not have the money. I made the sale, you took possession of the goods, that is the number one thing, you took possession of the goods. When you take possessions of the goods, it will truly becomes a sale, I haven't gotten the money, but it comes a sale. Why do they do this? Cause they want that revenue or your income to go up with the sale so that they can tax you in that year. They don't want it deferred, it gets deferred in the government because you don't pay taxes. You can't see this, but this is the balance sheet that we have at, from two thousand and seven through two thousand and twelve. And I'm gonna show you a little bit, this is one six six two over to three one three six, or one million, four hundred and seventy-four thousand dollar increase. Let me see it better here. So, in the general fund, and this is the general fund itself operating part, in two thousand and seven, we ended the year, one million, six hundred and sixty-three thousand. This right here shows you the increase between the years, so. One six six two, five seventy-nine gives you this, plus this gives you this, plus this gives you this, plus this gives you this, and we end up with one, three million, one hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars. That is one million, four hundred and seventy-four thousand dollar increase since two thousand and seven. And this is a good thing. Now, on this here, at the end of the year, and this only happens, is showing your outstanding receivables, we budget taxes at ninety-five percent, we don't receive a hundred percent. This is the book and numbers that come at the end of the year that you haven't received, well, it goes on the balance sheet but you have an offsetting liability, so the impact is a zero because you haven't received. And this is allowance for doubtful accounts, so if you net these all up, it's four hundred and thirty-eight thousand. And, uh, we had some little discussion and we're gonna get this clarified, but I talked to Chris Costner of Martin and Stein's Friday about this to make sure I was exactly right about this, which Mr. Wendley and myself are gonna get together and talk about that. So, this four hundred and thirty-eight thousand, because you are basically a cash taxpayer, will go to the balance. will go to the balance sheet in future years. Not today. It's owed to you because the bills are in the, in the hands, but it will come to us. It's been earned because taxes are due, but it has not been received. This chart here, on the right, I'm gonna show you the two ways. On the far left, the first one is the one million six hundred and sixty-two thousand nine hundred and some dollars. You can see the trend line where it's going and ending up with three-one-three-six. Or another way is show it this way. But this is a step type graph. So on the bottom here, on the left, it's showing the one million six-six-three. The top line, and this is how much you contributed in two thousand and eight, nine, a little bit in ten, another huge number in eleven, and this a little bit over here to come to three million one thirty-six. Alright, now, so on this, what I'm looking at is our DSS loan. This is the number that was actually taken out on nine-twenty-five at two point eight-nine for fifteen years. This is the interest column. This is the total amount of interest, four-twenty-one, four-oh-eight. So you show that and right here. So right now, that's what we're looking at. We're gonna have to pay four hundred and twenty-one thousand, four hundred and eight dollars of interest if we do that way. This is if you were to pay a fifty thousand dollar payment basically today. Same thing, interest comes at this number. You'd save twenty-four thousand five hundred and seven dollars. You made a payment of fifty, over the whole loan, you saved six percent. But here's the real number. You spend fifty, and your liability has come down by twenty-four-five-oh-seven, or a forty-nine percent return on your money. This is a hundred thousand. On the far right, it's total four-twenty-one again. Spend a hundred, and you interest total of three-seventy-two, you made eight, a forty-nine thousand dollars roughly. Same deal, forty-eight point eight, down a little bit, and there's a reason for that. But what's happening is you're recouping the two hundred and eight that you didn't get. You recovered this much, so right now, you got a net loss of one-fifty-nine. That's on a hundred thousand dollars. So the next thing is going a little bit further. Well, that's today. I think we can spend a hundred thousand dollars today. Well, next year, might wanna do that again, but I just put, the total differential was five, was roughly half a million dollars over ten years, fifty thousand dollar differential in the payments. Well, if you do this hundred today and eight more fifties, total of five hundred thousand dollars, you go from four-twenty-one to two-eighty, so you saved a hundred and forty thousand six hundred and thirteen dollars, which is twenty-eight-one percent now. That's at the end of the ten-plus years. The other thing that's interesting on this is looking right here. You've gone down to two years, you're not even doing this, so you're really incrementally making this the hundred and forty-two thousand. Well, in year eleven, you only got to pay sixty-eight thousand. So effectively, brought this loan down to a ten and a half year loan. Alright, show you a little comparison. This was the library loan. We did one million five hundred thousand at one point seven-seven percent. Total interest is eighty thousand dollars now. I voted for that one, well, I second this one, and I voted for it. And this is the reason. It's right here, I knew this number. Three hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars worth of savings by being proactive and carrying this forward. Now, you realize enough interest saving to really, this number's greater than this. I mean, it really makes it nice when you look at it in that perspective. This is what we did, that was what was recommended, fifteen, which would have cost us four-thirty-eight. Well, come to the DSS loan, two-one-nine and two-eight-nine, that's the problem. And one-seven-seven and three-three-nine, well, we lost two hundred and nine thousand dollars. So, but, by doing this over here, you can save a hundred and forty thousand six thirteen of this two hundred and nine, back again to the twenty-eight point one percent return. Now, why is that? Well, this is why. And that's why it's critical. Yearly savings get smaller as the loan is amortized. You pay the most interest in the front even of any loan. So that's why these numbers, and this is a drastic change, that would've been twenty-four-five-oh-seven if I'd've had fifty here, when I'm starting off with a hundred. So, forty-eight point eight, forty point, thirty-six, twenty-nine, twenty-five, nineteen, and so forth. So what happens is, it puts you in a, and I'm glad Jack made this comment when we were first talking about this, this way you evaluate your position every year. Next year, I got, I wanna do fifty. We don't have to do it. But if things continue, might wanna do a quarter of a million, who knows? The thing about it is doing it early, just like any investment with 401K or whatever. You need to get on board early. Alright, this chart here is taking the amortization again, showing the interest that we have. That's the interest in the first year, three-sixty-five days, so it's costing us a hundred and thirty-five dollars a day. And this is not exactly right because there's three hundred and sixty-five days in a year. And if you go back and calculate it on a daily basis, it'd be a little bit different. This is simple interest. So, four thousand dollars a month. Well, on nine-twenty-five, when we took this loan out, September, there's five more days, thirty-one in October, thirty in November, and three today. Sixty-nine days times a hundred and thirty-five, it's cost us nine thousand dollars.
Over the life of the loan?
No, that's since, since we took it out, we spent nine grand of interest. That's the dates. September, in other words, what that is, this is basically three hundred and sixty-five days, Jack. That cost is a hundred and thirty-five dollars a day. And multiply that times basically thirty, and you come to that number. So, all I did was figure out, we did this on the twenty-fifth, that's five days in September, thirty-one for the month of October, thirty for November, and three days in December. So you multiply that, and that's what it's cost. Alright, this again is, is the slide from Martin showing that we just went up two hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars for the current year. And this is another way of looking at that chart. What is the correct incremental payment amount? Well, this is the interest as it stands if we do nothing. You make a fifty thousand, you decrease this, this becomes your savings, and this is the rate of return. You make a hundred today, same thing, you save the forty-nine, forty-eight percent. If you make a hundred and fifty today, comes up, you're gonna save seventy-one and pay and get forty-seven percent return. You made a two hundred thousand dollars a day, you get forty-seven percent return and ninety-three thousand. Same way, until the max would be one-thirty-three, if you made that kind of payment. Now, this is a tax thing that Renee showed us, and it's, I'm gonna, that's the way that it's presented, and I just condensed some of the columns. And this is what's been happening. We budget ninety-five percent, which basically in the current year, that is one-hundred percent correct. But what happened, and you budget prior year taxes. When you do that, you're basically budgeting these numbers right here. It's what you're meant to, because they're prior year taxes. In the current year, you're taking and budgeting ninety-five percent. So, the six million dollars worth of receipts that you saw is this number, basically, that we collect. And we collect that about ninety-five percent in the first year. So this plus this is gonna equal you six million dollars. The thing about it is, the difference between here is that number that's on the balance sheet, that's out there, that's due you, that you're not recording in the fund balance because you have not received it yet. But, you will receive it. And this takes the budgeted numbers that we budgeted, the hundred percent receipts line, collected dollars, ninety-nine percent, ninety-nine, ninety-nine, almost ninety-nine, ninety-six. So, you can see that we are doing that, it just takes us time to get there. Now, this money rolls forward every year. So, if you look at the amounts that'll be in collecting, excess cash, excess, 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 a million dollars, and this isn't at the full rate, so you don't have that. But in these three years, you've done that. Come to the ninety-nine percent and compare that to the change. Now, there's some other good things that have gone on. We have been cost effective, we've done a good job on that, Sandy and Toby did a good job on trying to manage those. And it's helped, but there's also this component that is generating cash that, uh, just keeps flowing over, and it goes back from the tax rate and some other being proactive on, on cost expenditure to us. Now, this is spending projects, the money that we spent, and it's really the Kavanaugh. Some of that money's come out of grant money. Now, obviously, LS3P was not the hundred and thirty-three. HG Reynolds is grant money supposedly. Now, it is gonna be a cash impact to us as Gates Canyon taxpayers. On this slide is projected fund balance spending that Sandy did for Mr. Jordan. The thing to really understand, so, this year, we're gonna spend seven hundred and four thousand, basically, if we do all these things. Well, obviously, this, based on what Renee's comments, where are we probably gonna do this? Don't know that. We definitely gonna have to do this, that is there. So we're gonna spend money. Fund balance is gonna take a dip, probably, to a significant things, and that's what that's doing. Now, on here, at the bottom, these are negative charges against, these are positive returns that Sandy had that, for reimbursement back to the general fund for the, uh, library payments. So now, what you do, basically put this on the cash flow statement. So what happened here, I'm showing this, them on this line, these are my expenditure to us. This is an average of basically what I was showing you on the tax thing that keeps rolling forward, that's gonna show up and does materialize. So if I did all these, started with what the auditor said my available fund balance was, took out the seven, added the two-twenty-five, and rolled this forward from here to here, uh, from here to here, I'm gonna end up with three million six hundred and eighty-five thousand in fund balance. Well, you look at the other one down here, and Sandy was taking like the two-seven-seven-one, minus the seven oh-four, would give you this, so hers not rolling forward. But then I added, and the reason I had to do this is because you're not rolling them, I just took this, doubled this, added two-twenty-eight to here, two-twenty-eight, so the total of one million one hundred and forty-one thousand. And you can compare those fund balances. Alright, here, I pulled out deposits that were coming back from the library. Said, hey, don't care, I'm still at three million three-twenty-one. Alright, on this slide, what I've done, same thing. Beginning available balance that we had per the audit return, the spending that we're gonna have, took out the two positives that would've been back, and then I said, well, this is what I'm gonna spend today. A hundred, I'm gonna spend fifty here, this is for the debt payoff, where would I be at? With this projection of this number, I'm gonna be at three-oh-two-one at the end of two thousand and seventeen. Or, if you add it back to those two library things, I'll be at three million three hundred and eighty-five. This is still positive twenty-eight, thirty percent for balance. Now, in summary, with this. Total savings for the ten-year loan at two-one-nine versus the fifteen-year loan at two-eight-nine was two hundred and nine thousand dollars. That was the original thing that I showed you. The rate variance, two point one-nine versus two-eight-nine was eighty-three thousand dollars. I cannot, cannot recover that money, absolutely no way, unless I do one thing. And how do I do that? By making something greater than a fifty thousand dollar payment. Then I start capturing some of that rate variance because I'm changing it from rate to term. The term variance was a hundred and twenty-six thousand. And you can recover that, very easy to do that. You just make more payments, period, of this line. Increasing the first payment by fifty thousand lets me recover fifteen thousand of this number. If this number was increased by a hundred grand, then this number will go up and capture more of this. As large as the first incremental payment, the greater the amount of the rate variance dollars that will be recovered. Why today is critical? Time is money, and we had the money. The available fund balance, up two-seventy-seven last year, up two-sixty-eight this year. Now, it is gonna decline this coming year if we do those things that we said. But it does not put us in a bad position at all. Alright, the rate of savings declines as the loan matures. That's why the time value of money is so important. Just like you as an individual, if you were starting out to invest in your 401K plan or whatever today, it's better to save ten percent of twenty thousand dollars today than it is to wait until you're fifty and save ten percent. Back to that slide again, same thing. Showing that the opportunity of savings gets smaller. So let's say you do this, something happens in two thousand and seventeen. You need that fifty thousand dollars. Well, you're not giving up as much. You're not doing that. So that's the beauty of this flexibility. It's all about you and about where you're at and how much you can afford to spend. So, that's what you're doing. You ask yourself, can I afford this? Next year, you ask yourself again, can I afford this? What is my position? Things change. We have no fortune tellers, no one has a crystal ball. But the mathematics of the situation is, they never change. Math is math. It stays there. It does not change. So, and that's important. You have to take advantage of those. Alright, this is something I used in the early nineties that, and this, this is hard to get across sometimes. But, in the manufacturing environment out there, is recognizing that everybody's on a team. We all wanna win. And you had, I mean, that should be your goal in life. Winners and losers, each game has a winner and a loser. And question is, what makes the difference between a winner and a loser? Answer, the winners are the ones that are willing to put forth the extra effort to prepare for the game. Winners evaluate the risk and they take action. What must we do to obtain success in this situation? Take advantage of financial opportunities that improve results. Look for process improvements that yield positive returns. And any process that we have can be improved. You have to evaluate it and look at it and look for ways to make it do that. How do we accomplish this? Well, you focus on goals. Well, I have some goals that I'd like to see us do in the next, uh, couple of years that have- that have positive returns on the cash flow basis, no question about it, and can improve some processes that we have. How do you do that? Well, you had to get, well, we got a big project that's coming along, that's going to be uh, critical that we get county involvement, and people on board to get this done, and that's the courthouse. It's a very, uh, project that, um, is going, to make successful, is really going to take a lot of initiatives, from the commissioners, the courthouse committee, and our public, to do that. You have to community people motivated, and wanting to do this, leading the team, being out front, trying to pull them. How do you, another thing is thinking outside the box. And I'm always in this, I, I, I listen to what you have to say and everything, but I'm going to put it to a test. When you tell me something, I'm, I'm going to do that. I mean, it's just ingrained in me. I'm a guy, I trust you, and you, God commands us to do that, but I must verify, and I always try to do that. Be willing to change. If you've got a better idea, I want to hear what it is. Because I, you know, I want to understand my position, and why I'm different than you are, then we both grow, if we share knowledge and communications. I'm looking for best practices. I'm one of the best guys I can tell you about, of going out there. If I see you do something, I'm going to be observant of you, and if I see if it's working, guess what? I'm going to change, I want to win too. So, I'm going to do that. Look for best practices. And in the, out there today, it's, in these hundred counties, there are some people that are doing some things better than we are, some of them doing it worse. But, we would like to be one of those that can do everything at a hundred percent level. Then you have to execute those changes. And this is, had a little board, shows up, and this, basically, winners versus losers. A winner is part of the answer, a loser is part of the problem. A winner always has a program, a loser always has an excuse. Winner says, let me do it for you, or let me help you do that. A loser will tell you, that's not my job, someone else is going to have to worry about it. A winner sees an answer for every problem, a loser sees a problem in every answer. A winner says, it may be difficult, but it is impossible. A loser says, it may be possible, but it is too difficult. And I think today, where our country might be, if we hadn't had some of these great people that we had, that looked at that thing as, it may be difficult, but it is possible. Christopher Columbus set out, found this new world, took a risk. John F. Kennedy, went to the moon. Nobody could even conceive of that. And you think today, with cell phone technology, and the satellite stuff, you can literally talk to someone on the other side, a globe, be watching them, and if these people hadn't had that kind of attitude, we wouldn't be there. We wouldn't have telephones, we wouldn't have satellite TV, we wouldn't have ra, radio, we wouldn't have any of these kind of things that we have. So, it's, uh, and I thank God, every day, for people that will go out there and take a risk, and put themselves out there, so that our great nation can be built. So, that's, basically it.
Thank you, Commissioner Horr, on the presentation on the budget, property tax, and long-term debt. Board of, any discussions, comments, on Commissioner Horr's presentation? I would like to make, uh, one comment. Our finance officer's here with us. We've, we've observed and seen, uh, what a potential savings in interest payments could be. Sandy, would you recommend to the board that we pay down our debt with a hundred thousand dollars out of fund balance today? Okay.
So, that decision is for you all to make, and that is what I can say to you all, so our position is just.
Thank you very much. You've heard the finance officer, uh, like, like she said, that, you know, at any one time, we could have to shift anywhere from a million and a half dollars for operational expense, we have seven hundred thousand dollar, um, obligation as, as we speak. Of course, that still leaves some flexibility, but we also have to be mindful that, uh, we haven't had a major disaster, where the county had to put up money in, in a number of years. But, also, that would come from the county, you know, if we had, had some type of catastrophic event. But, even with all that, I, I'm, I'm comfortable, based on the last projection, that our finance officer provided us, or, or, or a portfolio, if you will, of our fund balance and obligations, I, I'm comfortable with, this year, uh, designating and paying off a hundred thousand dollars to the, to our debt service loans, and, uh, and realize some of those savings. But, you know, that's.
Well, I've, um, I've indicated in the past, that I have been in favor of paying down debt as well. And I looked earlier, um, today, at seven hundred and four thousand dollars that Sandy's referring to, and saw the items that, that were in play. I, I want to save, I want to save this interest. I certainly, um, am not in favor, I, I don't like this, this one point two million, um, fund balance decline. But, um, I, I also agree, in a previous meeting, I think, a couple of months ago, that, uh, that I was in favor of doing something now, and revisiting, uh, next year, around March or April, when we're preparing the budget, so that, uh, what our considerations are next time, are factored into the budget. So, I want to be on record, uh, in, in that regard. But, today, I could agree to a hundred thousand dollars, uh, debt reduction.
Let me, um, make a few more comments. There's, uh, and there is an issue that I'm concerned about in the future, and that is, what might transpire down the road. I, I'm not so much concerned about natural disasters as, I mean, those are risk takers. That can happen, no question about that. But, if, if things tend to trend, exactly what has happened over the last five years, and we continue to monitor our expenditure tools, and looking at those things, there's absolutely no reason that we don't continue to have this positive, um, trend. Now, it is going to go down, there's no question. I mean, with those spendings, if you do that. But, you got to look at on there too, now, the three hundred and twenty-five, we done committed in that to the library, we had that projection in there. We have, and the reason we did that on the five-year thing, is because we see what's going to happen with our long-term debt, uh, in two thousand and fourteen, when part of that is materializing. So, you're replacing one number with another. And you have these kind of things that are always going to be there. And that's, and the cash flow, uh, you always having to monitor your budget the same way, the county, any, any business, I, I have to do that daily. I don't, you know, when you make sales to your customers and everything, you, you weed out, make sure you got good customers, but you want them to pay you on a timely basis, because that cash is critical to your business, that you can do that. If you don't, you had to have a line of credit out there that you, and you, and most, any large business must have that. And so, you're always constantly monitoring your cash. But, based on our trend lines, and where we're at, there's absolutely no way that it would take an extraordinary event, for us to get in any real problem. Now, we do have some things that I'm concerned about, uh, very much so. That's about, that's about seven hundred thousand dollars that I'm concerned about. So, if you add that to the one point four, um, and it's about seven hundred, that, that brings about one point six. That's if all of those things occurred, every one of them. And it's probably unlikely that they will.
Yeah, the, the unanswered questions, however, are the things that we don't know, that the state says, um, we're going to let the counties have the bill for this going forward.
Take on secondary roads.
Take on secondary roads, being one of them, the, the state of North Carolina has, um, this year, and, and possibly last year, debated about the, the counties taking care of their secondary roads. Tremendous, tremendous bill. And, and if they decide to do that, folks, we, gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen, we don't have the authority to say, well, you can do it to the other ninety-nine counties, but you can't do it to us. Mr. Horr, I want to tell you that you got, uh, you've made your sale. You've got, you've got a couple of parties that agree that they're, they're listening to you, and, uh, I'd like to hear what the other two parties have to say.
Yeah.
I like.
Got it. Mr. Horr, Mr. Horr made a, a, uh, a, uh, choice one time, and, and asked a motion to spend a hundred thousand, and I seconded that motion, and I'm still for that. It is a savings, it's not an overnight savings, it's a savings over a period of years, certainly. But, I feel like our county is in really good shape now. Since I've been a commissioner, I, we received a letter from the state, saying we had to improve, and you, as, as he showed in this draft, his, uh, slide presentation, we have improved over the last five years. We've put money back in our fund balance, and we have brought that percentage up past what the state has required, and personally, I think we can afford it.
Well, I'm the new person on the board, but I have been attending the meetings, and as a person who has borrowed money to pay for a home, I know that every time I make an extra payment every year, I cook my thirty-year loan to a twenty-two and a half-year loan. Really, I've done it even more than that. Um, so, I'm all to end for saving money, uh, and I could have supported.
All right, well, we have support of that, and if that's the case, uh, we can entertain a motion, uh, to designate a hundred thousand dollar payment for, uh, the loan, outstanding loan that we have.
For this year.
For this year only. And I, and I do want to reiterate, that, you know, in ongoing years, we need to reevaluate this very carefully, because at any one time, our tax, uh, our finance department has to shift money from the fund balance to operate, and we don't need to have to borrow money to operate, if we need a million and a half dollars to make payment, make payroll, we need to be able to do that, and it comes from fund balance. And so, you know, twenty, twenty-five percent fund balance, twenty-eight percent is not something that, you know, is so extraordinary, uh, that you shouldn't get there. But, I just want to throw that in, you know, we've got some money, but it's, it's, it's nothing to think that, you know, we're, we're not going to have problems as a result of what we have. So, I'm, the, we can entertain a motion, we call for the, uh, motion, and it's a pleasure for the board to move forward.
You want me to do it? All right, I'll make a motion that we spend a hundred thousand dollars tomorrow morning, appropriate it against our debt. Yeah. Well, I'll give you time to move it. All right.
Designate which loan?
Yes, we need to designate which loan, and we'll get it done as soon as possible, but, you know, the bank has certain restrictions, we have to follow their rules.
Right, I make a motion that we appropriate one hundred thousand dollars as soon as possible against our DSS loan, and recover, uh, interest savings.
If, if permissible.
If permissible.
With, with the loan institution. Like, that's, covers what Sandy said. Because there are some clauses in there, sometimes, that says that there's a penalty if you do an early payoff.
I don't think this one is, not.
Have a motion.
I'll second the motion.
All right, it's been motion second, that we will, uh, pay off, pay one hundred thousand, one hundred thousand dollars toward our debt, uh, debt service payments. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, nay?
Thank you.
Okay, all right. Is there a motion to approve, uh, the forthcoming budget amendment? The finance officer will provide for us.
Samuel?
Second.
All right, it's been motion second, that we approve the budget amendment to make the hundred thousand dollars available. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, nay? All right. Will you need a signature on that, budget?
No, I will not.
All right, um, next item on our agenda would be our twenty thirteen commissioner meeting schedule, and I believe that has to do with, uh, adjusting our January date because of Martin Luther King.
Right.
And really, what this is about, it basically is, and, and this has been ongoing, and this was one of my first things when I came on the board, is community involvement, and I was citizens. I go around in my precinct, basically, and talk to a lot of people, and I encourage them to come down here and, and get involved in the county. Well, most of the time, unless I'm talking to some elderly people in my, um, precinct, like Mr. Bazemore, Miss Anne Howell, and Mr. Rob, they can't come, because they out working. Well, it takes people, retired people, to have the opportunity to come and sit out here this morning, and we can look and see who's here. Now, if you went out and polled the citizens of Gates County, you're not going to see that many, unless they fit those criteria. They had to be independently wealthy, they had to be retired, or they had to be self-employed. If you're working for an employer, he expects you on the job. He don't expect you down at Gatesville, listening to your politicians talking, he doesn't do that. And most people, obviously, work daytime, so I'd like to see us transition, and this is an experimental basis or whatever, to give people the opportunity, at nighttime, to come to these meetings. Then, they have, you know, when I'm approached with that thing, I have an argument, to a certain extent. Now, I don't have one, absolutely nothing. It's hard for me to, to debate someone or get in there, but if I offer them the opportunity to be able to do that, and I, and he doesn't have that secondary thing to come there, then I know that I've got something to stand on. Now, I do not. So, I would like for us to, in the coming year, to not go a hundred percent, but to reverse this procedure, that we had twelve daytime and six nighttime, that we reversed that, that we have twelve nighttime and six daytimes. Now, sometimes that does cause a little bit of a conflict, maybe with some other. Now, sometimes that does cause a little bit of a conflict, maybe with some other people. And although I have seen a lot of these other organizations, just like Thursday night, a guy came from Alway to Raleigh to, and was gonna drive back to have a six-thirty meeting. So, you know, I just think our citizens deserve that. I think they deserve the opportunity to come here. I think it's also in our best interest to get the community people involved. That's how we build consensus. That's how you increase your integrity, your confidence in your people, is showing them that, hey, I'm, I wanna be in front of you. I'm a cannibal. And you have very little argument to those people out there, and the citizens, you really don't. So it's about serving the public. As public servants, I think we need to give them the opportunity to be, be here if they will come. It might be just like this. I don't have a clue. But you have to start. You have, as I said, you have to be willing to change. You have to look at best practices and see if it works. If it don't work, you start doing something else. So I'd like for us to be proactive and make this kind of, this change for this year, start off this way. And that would be basically twelve nighttime, six daytime, tentatively. And, and I guess what that, and that could mean, whether, whether this is important or not, whether the daytimes would be at the front end of the month and the nighttimes at the, at the end part of the month. Obviously, you'd have to flip-flop some of those, those things if you're gonna do that. But I would like to see us have that flexibility and to go to the twelve-six with the nighttimes taking the prevalence.
You making that a motion?
Well, I'm, I'm putting that after discussion.
All right.
I will make it a motion, but.
All right, well, we can discuss it first. I will hold my opinion to last. Jack, if you all want.
You have that prerogative, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Would you care to, any comment on that, Commissioner Owens?
Well, I remember when it came up in the past, there was some conversation about our department heads having to be here at night. And I don't, I don't know if we talked about compensation for that or not, but, but they would be here on, sitting in the audience, you know, waiting to have dialogue back forth with us. I think that was the, for me, that was the only issue, and not that that's not something that we can't overcome. But for the people providing the reports, whether that night meeting be the beginning of the month or the end of the month, I'm not sure. I mean, I'd like to hear everybody's comments on it today, but, and I'm not against it, but I don't know if we have all the data here to make a decision as far as our department heads. So I, I'm certainly not against having night meetings. They actually weren't better for me, but that's my say on it right now.
Ken?
My, my concern is, is having our department heads here and sort of giving, having to give them time off for the time that they come in and spend. I know they do night meetings and other, other things at night probably already. And compensation or time off, whatever, how, how it works out. That's really my only concern. As far as May, I can work at night. I can be here at night, or I can be here in the daytime, I'm in.
All right.
I think citizen participation is very important. If it would increase citizen participation, I think that would be a good thing for the county. I'm not sure why year's trial might be too long. You might want to shorten it up if we even, if we did it. Also, all county boards, do we know when they meet?
The majority of them at night. Yeah. Majority of them at night.
Okay. I was just saying that maybe we need to check with the surrounding counties and see how their meeting schedule.
You're talking about the commissioners?
Commissioner meeting.
A lot of them at night.
And I'll, but, you know, I'm all for anything for, for more citizen involvement. But I don't know if we need to do a whole year of trial to figure that out.
And I think I, I did twelve counties, surrounding counties, I believe, and then I'd had to go back and find my documentation. But I, I think if I did, when I did that, I think it was almost right at seventy-five percent of them were doing mostly night meetings. And they, they had a balance too. But I think when I, and I, I don't wanna be short because I can't remember, but it was somewhere in that seventy, seventy-five percent range that they were doing that.
You know, we'll be competing with American Idol and all that stuff, right?
Well, and that's, that's the thing. But right now, Jack, I'm competing with the man's job. You know, that's what bothers me. I mean, I, I have absolutely no argument whatsoever. And now as far as county employees and stuff, I'm gonna go right back to my slide. I take that as part of my job. That's, and I take that as part of my job behind this table here, is serving the people that are out there and trying to make them comfortable with me and see that their county and their government is moving in the right direction. That's more important to me than anything else. I worked a lot of nights with IP in the early days when I was closing the books. I mean, ten, eleven o'clock at night, first four months, four days of the month, that's what we were doing. That was part of the job. Now, I didn't, I was a sourdip employee. I didn't get compensated for that. It was an expectation. That was what it was, an expectation.
Do you think we, do you think we need more information to make a decision?
Well, first of all, you know, I think the board has done a great job in trying to make accommodations for our citizens at night. We have six meetings per year at night where our citizens can come to. And if you look at that attendance, our night attendance, you know, what is that attendance? That attendance is not much more than it is now. And Ken and, and Jack have both mentioned our personnel, our department heads, and we have to bring them in in order to attend these meetings. We, as commissioners, we serve on boards. Most of those are night meetings. We have activities during the week. Many times, many of us are involved in various activities. And so there are some nights that are not good nights, we, you know. But, and the other thing is that many times we have to bring in representatives from other agencies who come and speak to the board. And so there's a lot of things, a lot of logistics involved when you kinda corner yourself in, if you will, to, to night meetings. But I think the current path we're on is a good one. I think that the citizens do have a chance to come at their convenience. And, you know, unless there was some compelling evidence by the citizens, not just one or two, I mean, but as a whole, to say, I want more night meetings, I would tend to trend where we are. And occasionally, you know, if we wanna have some night meetings for specific issues, if we have issues that we feel that are important to the county, I think we as a board maybe ought to address that and say, you know, we'll have a night meeting and advertise that to that extent. But, you know, for the general things we have on agenda, I'm more in favor of trying to stay where we are. But I'm flexible as well. You know, it's a pleasure of the board, certainly. I'm, I'm gonna adhere to what the board wants to do. So.
I'd like to expand on that, Henry. And I guess, there again, I'll take this situation. We had ability to dictate, but you, to lead our citizens, you have to provide them with the opportunity. And you had to make it, you had to continually have that encouragement factor right there. So, and, and I'm not, maybe it's twelve months, but certainly with what Lunder said there, I think we can make a modification. There again, have a willing to change and see what best practices are. If it don't work, we change. But you have to have a willingness to change. You have to. And, and it might not. I, I don't know that. But I think there's a great opportunity here. But you have to push that. And it's up to us to push it. The citizens aren't gonna push it. You have to do that. You have, it's sort of like, you know, the coach. You have to be the coach. That is the position that we're all in. We have to be salesmen. Regardless, and we got a pro, some projects. I mean, we got to be salesman. And I think you have to sell this because I think there are extremely, with what's gone on in this county, I think there's an opportunity here to embrace and, and get people on the team rather than off the team. And I, and I, I just feel like that risk needs to be taken. Now, if it disrupts this thing, I, I'm not opposed to going back. I just want a chance and an opportunity, see if it works. That's all.
So what is, what is your pleasure, Mr. Horr?
I would, I.
You wanna make a motion?
Well, I'm not gonna go to twelve. I'm gonna go back to what Lunder said. Six months is fine for me. Let's, let's give it an opportunity for six months. Let's reverse the situation for six months. Let's see if it works.
Well, I, I, just one more point of discussion. I hear what you're saying, and I am not against it. But there's already evidence that at the night meetings, it's like Henry said, the majority of time it's a smaller group than during the day. I mean, just for the sake of changing, I mean, I'm not opposed to change. But for changing just for the sake of changing, I'm, I'm not necessarily, I'm not in favor of that just for the sake of, of saying, hey, we changed something. I think we actually have a picture of the results. There, I mean, there are some people that when they get home from work, they wanna rest. They don't wanna come out and be bored to death by five commissioners. So.
That's true.
And they have the video.
Yeah. That's true. I would, I would acknowledge that.
We have a motion on the board, I mean, on the floor, to reverse our commissioner's schedule from day meetings to six days and twelve nights. I got a second.
No, no, Henry, I'm, I'm gonna rescind that to a six-month reversal. I, I don't.
Okay, is this an actual motion or are we just?
Yeah, he's got a motion.
Yeah, I would make a motion that we take the first six months, then we reverse our day meetings to night meetings and vice versa. Now, the only problem is that, that we would have had a, in January with my grant, we would need to start off with a day meeting in January because the Martin Luther thing needs to be the, the night meeting rather than making this abrupt change here, in other words. So basically what that is, is, basically what that is, is having five, well, let's see. That'd be one, two, three, four. Yeah, that, that's right. In other words.
You got, you already got a night meeting in January.
That's right. Well, that's what I'm saying. You would leave that the same.
Right, it's gonna be removed at twenty-third.
Yeah, yeah. But we'd have a day meeting in January second, night meeting on Jan, on January twenty-third, night meeting in February sixth, night meeting on March sixth, day meeting on March eighteenth, night meeting on April third, a night meeting on May third eighth, a day meeting on May twentieth, and a night meeting on June fifth. So you basically got six and three. As an experiment.
And monitor the results and make a decision in July?
Well, I, I, I want people to, and I think you've had a, yes, that would be fine, but there again, you got to give people, our citizens' time to react, and I don't know if the six months, and that was why I would, was extending that out, but six months is fine. I just wanna, I just wanna make an effort to make a change that I think could be positive and show the citizens that and be receptive to, to the people, especially in the Hall District. I mean, these are the people I'm talking to all the time. And so I, I don't know what it would yield, but it sure can't hurt.
All right, Jack, is there another question? There's a motion on the floor. Is there a second? All right.
Mr. Chairman, let me ask a question. And I, I'm the new one on the board, so bear with me. If we did this, I mean, we can't just go by, oh, I think there's more here today than it was at the night meeting. We would have to have someone, a sign-in sheet or someone to take an actual count, and people come and go. You know, we started out with several more people here today than what's here at the end.
Some of them come to see you later.
Well, I was thankful for my friends and family.
And we were glad to have them. We were glad to have them.
But I mean, you wanna have to have some way to monitor that. Because if we kind, the number nine, we have nine. If we counted it at the beginning of the meeting, we had a lot more.
Yeah.
And people might come in late, come in early, so I'm not sure how we would, I mean, somebody was.
One thing we'll have in our favor is that we can pan the audience with the camera at specific times.
Oh, okay. I forgot we on TV.
The other thing is that, you know, we started at ten o'clock. We were having night meetings. We'd be going on ten o'clock right now. So most, and sometimes we end up eleven o'clock, we would end up eleven o'clock, and then we'd have to go into closed session. We, some, we could be here to midnight, one o'clock in the morning. It would not be unusual for, for major business on nights, so.
Well, what, on the night, on the closed session, Henry, I'd want those at the front end of the process, that we would start out and, like we normally, we've done that, you know, have the closed session prior to the opening in here.
All right.
So I wouldn't want to.
The motion's on the floor, and right now we do not have a second.
Let me ask another question, if you don't mind. I know there are some issues coming before the county. I'm on the old courthouse committee. And certainly we're gonna need citizen input and I'll, did I hear or did I understand you, Mr. Chairman, that you would entertain additional night meetings if the case warranted?
Yes, I, I would recommend it. We have issues that we know that we want citizens involved, and we can do that at any time and change the, change our meetings to a night meeting.
And that would certainly be one of them.
Oh, yeah, we definitely need that.
And I, you know, we don't really have to have a schedule change to do that. But, you know, that's just an option that we have as board to make that happen.
Well, I do think it's, I think the citizens of the county are interested, a lot of them are interested, and they see you in the grocery store or whatever. And if, but we need to publicize if we're gonna have the night meeting, our special night meeting, or, and get it out in the newspaper, but, you know, unfortunately, not everyone takes the index. We've really gotten to do a good job of publicizing when we have these, if we have special night meetings. And I'll, but I, I'm certainly for more citizen involvement. I don't know how to get there, but I'm for, for citizen involvement.
All right. We've had discussions. Again, if there's no second, it is policy of this board that we do not have a second, that we will not vote on that issue, and the motion dies. All right. The next item on our agenda, well, it's not on the agenda, but it's included in this one, is that we want to make everyone aware that our night meeting for January the twenty-first will be on January twenty-third in observance of Martin Luther King's birthday. And the next item would be our citizens' comments. The only one I see signed up is Co-op extension agent, Libo. Holly? Oh, yes, thank you. Good afternoon.
Just want to remind you that you have received the invitation for holiday celebrations while I was working there, where after long, there's an office that's completely closed. So I'm just, I'm just preparing for the second annual holiday time. And there will be options, options of exchange. And based on the response from the county departments, we'll determine whether we will continue to have it or not. Or if we'll move it to a different, some probably be based.
And that's on the twenty-first?
Yes.
We have to RSVP. Okay. Well, thank you so much. All right, that concludes our agenda. We do have one, one item we do wanna mention, mention before we go to our commissioner comments. And that is, the FJ Outland Memorial Recognition will be held here in the courthouse on Sunday, December ninth at two o'clock, and it is public invitation. Most of us are aware of what the memorial is about. He's one of the survivors from the USS Indianapolis that was, was bombed at, in Pearl Harbor. And so, you know, the county has endorsed that. We're gonna provide sound equipment as well for that event, so be aware of it. It's an invitation to the public as well. And we wanna show Mr. Outland that we're very proud of him. Yes?
Not with a target on us.
All right, and the next item, our commissioner comments. And Commissioner Jordan, do you wanna start today or...
Yeah, I'll start. It's good to be starting off a commissioner new year, I guess we would say, even though it's December, with a new commissioner, Ms. Hoffler. Welcome aboard. And I expect your time spent on the planning board to be of great value to us. And I'm excited about that. And congratulations to Commissioner Jordan, being chairman, and looking forward to a great year.
Thank you. Laura?
First of all, if, I'm starting out, and all the citizens that are still left here, I appreciate you being here again. I hope everyone has a merry, merry Christmas. Congratulations to Ms. Hoffler, and Mr. Jordan, and Jack. I think we have a lot of opportunities out here. We have some things that, to work on, being proactive and do that. And again, I wanna take a leadership role in those things, because there are a lot of things that we can do to make our county better. We are at a disadvantage in our county, but we do have some strengths that we can push forward and, and make some things happen. There again, you have to be proactive though, and you do have to try to move the ball forward. And I wanna continue to do that. And I, I wanna thank my colleagues up here this morning, because especially on the debt, it's extremely important. And, and it's, it's a passion with me. I believe in driving results. I believe in returns on my investments. I am concerned about risk. But you have to take risk in life. If you don't take risk, you won't never go anywhere. You just will not do that. You, you won't always be a winner. Sometimes you're gonna lose. But the thing about it is getting up off the court or the deck or whatever and keep moving forward, and you will be successful. And, and that, so, there again, I really do appreciate the impact of doing that. And from the taxpayer's standpoint, as a tax, not appreciated as a commissioner, but also as a taxpayer, because it is important to save the taxpayers' money. But we are custodians of their assets. And that is the expectation. They want you to take and spend their money just like you, they would spend their own, you know, if it was in their pocket or your own money. And unfortunately, that today, it seems like some people disregard that. That's entrusted with them. I had that responsibility and have had it for numerous years with the company that I worked for, and I took it extremely serious, and I take it serious today. And so, again, I really do appreciate that vote to spend a hundred thousand dollars against our debt. Again, hope everybody has a merry, merry Christmas. Thank you.
Yep. Certainly like to thank everybody that, that came today, whether they stayed or not. I, I still like to thank them for coming. And I thank them for the support of Ms. Hoffler, the ones that came to see her being sworn in, and Mr. Jordan also for him being re-sworn in. And I'd like to congratulate everybody on their new positions, Mr. Owens, and Mr. Jordan, Ms. Hoffler. And I think Gates County is certainly moving in the right direction, and it's, it's a good thing to see. Thank you.
Well, I had my opening statement, and, but I do want to congratulate Mr. Jordan and Mr. Owens for their election to chair and vice chair. I do look forward to working with each of you individually, and I think as we work to bring consensus, that, that is a good thing for the county, as we come from different backgrounds and have different opinions. And for out of that, we could be, I think, a much better board. And I'm looking forward to these new challenges, and I'm ready to get to work. I didn't know that I was going to have, be on a starvation diet. This is kinda, I'm used to eating at eleven-thirty. But anyway, I hope all of you have a wonderful holiday and that we hit the road running in January.
Thank you, thank you so much. I too want to thank everyone for coming and being here today and for the citizens' input and support that the citizens give to the commissioners, and, and I do thank all of you for allowing me to be your representative for another four years. I do welcome Commissioner Hoffler to the board. She brings a lot to the table, and we have a lot on the table in that. So, there's a lot of issues that we have to deal with. We're gonna have to make decisions, and it takes us as a board, working hard to try to get to where we need to be for the county. I commend Commissioner Owens for being elected vice chair, and I thank the board for the confidence that you've placed in me to be the chair for this year. And certainly I will do my best to serve the citizens and, and be what you've elected me to be for the board. Also, I, I do wanna say to the board that, you know, as commissioners, we're all committed, and I think commitment is so important, because many times we do not resolve things when we first approach them. It takes being committed to it and revisiting it and doing the research that we need to do to make sure that we're doing the right thing. I commend Commissioner Horr for his research and, and, you know, if we don't come to an agreement right away, it doesn't mean that we won't get to an agreement, but, you know, there has to be some type of effort to make sure that we do what we call due diligence. So I, I thank everyone for being here. I do thank our county manager, our interim. Very proud to have him and thankful that he agreed to come. And we're looking for great things from him, although in a short while. So, hope everyone has a great Christmas. Thank you for being here, and we'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
All right, all in favor? Aye. All right, we'll recess until the, we have, end of, a meeting on the fifth. We'll recess, make that recess.
So move.
All right.
And that's at three, correct?
At three o'clock.
Second on that.
Second.
All right, all in favor? Aye. All opposed? Thank you all.